May I ask an IT question? How do you, how do you get your photograph on this? It's on my, do I have to sign in and make a separate Zoom account for the town council email?
Your picture in your profile and your Zoom account. You don't have to have it. I have it associated with my personal Gmail account. I don't use my town council account, but you just have to have the picture in your profile.
And you would do that how?
If you go down to.
Three minutes. This, this could go.
Okay, all right.
We'll touch base later.
Where's Mark? Get Mark up in there.
Methinks not.
You need to fix his picture too.
He looks like he's on the Starship Enterprise.
Here's, here's my stern countenance.
Hey Linda, you can do all kinds of fun stuff.
I can make myself look like a cat.
You can be sideways. Now I'm upside down. That's better.
So you don't want to get stuck like that. You only have two minutes.
Panic sets in. That's like when I had the iPad incident.
Just trying to get less of the rights.
Mr. Roberts. Thank you everyone. Welcome to our 28th council meeting. Before we get started tonight. We'll stand for the flag of the United States of America. In due republic, for its parents, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the breathing justice for all. Thank you all. Just on the housekeeping side of things, for those of you participating from home. On the Zoom meeting, there's an icon down at the bottom to raise your hand. If you're calling in on your phone. Star six will mute your phone. Star nine will indicate if you have a question. When called upon, please state your name and address with town clerk. And with that, you will begin with our roll call.
Ms. Yipusa?
Here.
Ms. Abbott?
Here.
Mr. Bodenmeyer?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Here.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Radyo?
You. Over to our town administrator, Mr. Trina.
Good evening, Mr. President, town council, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin, I would like to answer the two questions that we received last night. The first question, I might have them out of order, but the first question I remember was the one where we were asked for an explanation of the actual expenditure attributed to AIPC for fiscal year 20 and the civic support budget. So if you look on page 79. If the budget presented last night, there was $15,619 attributed to AIPC in fiscal year 20 and $5,206 attributed to the Common Fench point community center. Those two amounts added together sum to $20,825, which is the total civic support that was approved for the Common Fench point community center in fiscal year 20. There'll be $15,619 was a payment that was entered in the wrong spreadsheet cell and has since been corrected. We verified this against the general ledger, which correction, which correctly records the full $20,825 payments to Compliment Point. And the $18,000 is correctly attributed to AIPC in the planning budget because that's where AIPC resided in that part 20. The second question asked was, why is there a disparity between the pension market values listed on page 108 of the budget? The values listed in the audit on page 126 of the audit and the Gatsby returns, reports. Values for 2017, 18 and 19 in the budget, the page 108 are the actuarial values. Values on page 108 of the budget presented last night for those years should have been fair market values. We have corrected the table and the values agree with the audit and the Gatsby returns. In a nutshell, the difference between actuarial values and market values. Well, money attributed or contributed every year to a pension plan is placed in a trust and then it's invested in stocks, bonds and other investments. So these are the plans of the pension plans assets. And on any given day, the market value of plans assets is the amount of money that we would receive if we cashed in the investments, kind of like if we cash in year 401. That's the fair market value. An actuary can't use the market value to predict the amount of money needed to be set aside to pay for future retirees because it varies so much from year to year because the stock market rises and falls. An actuary considers the long-term performance of the investments by using algorithms to smooth out the variations from year to year, which creates an actuarial value of the plans assets, which is the likely value of the investments based on typical long-term investment results. Both values are important and useful in evaluating pension plans. And typically auditors use the fair market value. It's important to always compare apples to apples though. So we have adjusted those values to all be fair market value. And therefore they will tie now to the audits and the Gatsby report. We appreciate the question and we have corrected the information provided in the proposed budget. So now if we go to where we left off. We do need to do, oh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President, Larry Fitzmaurice, Kristen Court. Thank you, Mr. Rayner, for your explanation. And thank you for the correction. Does this affect the data, these changes, does this affect the data on page 110 that are used to predict? Or is this a smoothing action that you refer to?
No, page 110 is accurate. Page 108 is, that's an in-house graph that's created. We'll make sure it's updated before this budget is published. We've updated in-house, but that page 110, that data. That's the, that's where we pulled the data from, but. They bounce back, they bounce between actuarial values of fair market values. But the bottom line is we should always, if we're going to compare from one, from one report to the other, so a Gatsby report to an audit report to the budget, we should be consistent. So we should just consistently use fair market value or we should consistently use actuarial value. But no, it does not affect, have an effect on the overall pension.
So this entry in column nine, that is 60 million and et cetera. That's the accurate number going into this table.
That is the accurate number because that's the actuarial value of the assets. Unfortunately, you know, the fair market value depending on whatever the market was when they pulled that report, I believe on 30 June, you know, the fair market value could be higher or it could be lower just depending on how the market is at that time. But the actuarials, the tables consistently use the actuarial value of the assets. It's just, you know, that's just the difference.
All right, sir, I appreciate the answer. I think that at least I myself would like to have a discussion at some later date as to how this smoothing action affects our report to the state and, and the bonding agencies for how much of the pension fund is funded, which was in the audit at 49.5%. And in this would be a bit higher, so. Obviously, there's a concern there.
The auditor is using the fair market value for that period. Actuaries don't use the fair market value for the reasons I just described. So the actuarial table for the use, for the intended use of this table is more, is a more accurate picture of the long-term liability of the pension.
All right, sir, thank you.
Hello, Tom Grebe, 110 Sarah Drive. I, like Mr. Fitzmaurice, would like to have a much more in-depth explanation of that. I am, I have to tell you, I am confused how there could be a $4.3 million difference. And when you start out in a 20-year sequence with a $4.3 million difference, the difference at the end of that sequence would be a lot different. I also would like to get a much more in-depth explanation of why that makes sense. And the other thing is, why would the auditor use a different system than the actuarial system unless it was, the auditor isn't looking forward. The auditor is saying what trues to the actual amounts in the, in the fund itself. Why, why would they be different?
Quite frankly, the auditor is concerned about what the value is at the time we close the books. The actuaries are not concerned at the time those are books. They're looking at the life of the pension, which is why they smoothed out those numbers.
Yeah, but they start from a point. And the point they're starting at is $4.3 million different. And over 20, 20 years, that makes a big, huge difference.
I see your point. I will defer to the actuaries who run these kinds of algorithms and will get somebody to help explain this to the council and the audience interest.
All right, thank you very much because that, that honestly is very confusing. I've dealt with pensions most of my life and I've never seen anything like this. Thank you.
All right, so. If we could now pick up where we left off yesterday, if we turn to, but what we need to do a little house thing. If we go to page 31 of the budget. Okay, on page 31 of the budgets, back to that other section. This is the revenue rental investment and other income. In the section at the bottom and other, you'll see that the school SRO revenue has been zeroed out. It was $80,000, but we deducted that $80,000 from the school operations budget. So that expenditure doesn't exist and therefore we zeroed out the revenue and those zero out. So the new total now is $418,821 for this section, which is a 12.73% increase. And we ask for your provisional approval of that amount. So moved.
Seconded.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Radyo?
Motion passes seven.
Now if you turn to page 11. The grand total of revenue would now change. And that sum total for revenue is now $69,745,75 projected revenue. And we would ask for your provisional approval of that amount.
So moved.
Second. All those, David?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bodenmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton? Kelly? Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Mr. Radyo?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, so now we'll pick up where we left off last night with recreation department. And we can go to page 76. Okay, so with recreation. In salaries, the real change here is the realignment of part-time staff between beach and non-beach personnel and operations. So overall, there is an increase for just a couple more camp staff. Operations, go to the next page, please. Add a line to account for brown house operations, which includes expenditures for the HVAC system, the security system, snow shoveling, waste removal, cleaning and supplies. These costs are covered by the tenant revenue. eventual change here in operations though is the increase in camp program and event expenses. Expenses are offset by $177,005 in revenue generated by these activities. But overall, we are projecting a 49.25% increase in the recreation department expenditures. And we ask provisional approval of $311,045 recreation. So moved.
Second.
All those, David?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bodenmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Radyo?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Now if we go to the next page, page 78. We'll cover parks. At first is Glen Park. Here we've increased Glen Park building and ground maintenance lines to account for cleaning, plumbing, repairs, pest control and repairs to the stone wall. We ask for provisional approval of $12,810 for Glen Park operations.
So moved.
Second. David?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bodenmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Radyo?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
And then just below that, we have Melville Park. The Melville Park committee has recommended a level funded budget. So we ask for provisional approval of $13,950 for Melville Park operations expenditures.
So moved.
Second. Okay, Mrs. Grebe?
Thank you. As someone who lives right here, I'm interested, what is a coastal system water watch?
You know, that's a great question. I used to know, I don't know off the top of my head, is there somebody from the Melville Park?
I'm happy to get in touch with them. I appreciate it. It was absolutely new to me. Thank you.
This is Gary Crosby. I think I can answer that question.
Thanks, Gary.
Coastal system water watch, I believe, is the URI lab processing for the sampling that they do each year.
So now.
Yeah, just like we have a. All those, David?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott? Mr. Bodenmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Radyo?
Aye. The motion passes seven to zero.
So now we'll transition to the enterprise funds if we start on page 97. The word, for those that are new to the budget, budgeting, a word about enterprise funds. These are established to account for operations of a specific activity. The enterprise funds are segregated from the other town funds and accounts. The intent that the revenues generated by these activities would be devoted principally to the funding of all the operations of that activity. In plain language, the revenues generated by the enterprise activity are intended to pay for the cost and operation of the activity. The very first enterprise fund is the Glen Farm Equestrian Center. Yeah, everybody got that? In accordance with the concessionaire's contract with the town, the concessionaire should pay the town an annual base fee of $18,000 plus 5% of their annual gross receipts. An amount not to exceed the first 5,000 of revenue share generated during each quarter of the initial term should be immediately credited back to the concessionaire so that they can invest that in repairs, renovation and long-term maintenance. And this is monitored regularly through a review of the center's financial statements with the Director of Economic Development. On operations, we project expenditures for grounds maintenance and request provisional approval of $10,000 for that expense.
So moved.
Will you guard? Oh, sorry, second. Hey, all those, David?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Bodenmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Radyo?
Aye.
And you see the $8,000 in surplus there. That's revenue and that was accounted for in your votes last night. So that was approved at last night's meeting. So scroll down to page 98. The transfer station and this budget was previously approved on November 23rd. Go to page 99. On page 99 and 100. This is the Glen Manor House. As we recover from the pandemic and event gathering restrictions are beginning to be rescinded, Glen Manor House is starting to see an increased number of wedding workings. We are all hopeful that the economy will recover quickly, but realize it will likely take time to return to pre-COVID levels of revenue. We are asking you to provisionally approve the originally projected, or the projected, I'm sorry, revenue of $475,000. Glen Manor House operation costs of $235,056. Net surplus of $239,945. And capital improvements of $59,986. First one is the revenue of $475,000.
Motion to provisionally approve the Glen Manor House enterprise fund.
Seconded.
David?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Hi. Mr. Bodenmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Radyo?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
And then you can see in the box, just while there were says allocations based on the 75% of net surplus formula. There is $179,958 on projected revenue to the general fund, which you approved yesterday. So if you scroll down. Here we have the septic loan program. This program was created for the residents, so the residents could install new onsite wastewater systems due to mandatory compliance with state regulations for septic systems and the phase out assessables that were required to follow. So because of this and because these systems are expensive and there are some residents that will need assistance, the town created a loan program administered for the town by Rhode Island Housing Authority. The town borrows funds at low cost and then we offer these funds to citizens in the form of low interest loans to help them address the issue. The town maintains this program for those that may not meet all the requirements of the community septic system loan program. So tonight, we ask for, we ask, we ask for provisional approval to transfer $45,824 from the general fund to the septic loan program. And then we ask that the expenses associated with this program, which are projected to be $6,424, leaving $43,401 available for the program. We ask that you provisionally approve a net amount in the program of $43,401. So moved.
Seconded.
All those, David?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bodenmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Radyo?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Go down to the last enterprise fund. This is relatively new. This is the Arthur Daniel Howell House. In accordance with the concessionaire's agreement, the vendors are obligated to remit $30,540 base fee to the town. Also, as part of the agreement, the base fee will be credited back to the vendor for continued renovations in the building. We ask for provisional approval of the $30,540 base fee and the $30,540 credit back to the vendor. So moved.
Second.
Ms. Yipusa?
Ms. Yipusa? All those, David?
Ms. Yipusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Bodenmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Radyo?
Aye. Yes. That's seven to zero.
Okay. So. Now we'll cover debt service and other. now we'll cover debt service and other expenditures. And I'll ask that you turn the page. Please begin on page 32 and run from 32 to 36, which is the expenditure summary. And so the very first section, you've now covered everything up to page 35. If you go to page 35. Okay, right at the top there, you see debt bond service school and debt bond service town. These are broken out for information on pages 89 through 91, and then there's a summary that ties back to here on page 92. We're asking for provisional approval of $546,404 for school bond debt service and provisional approval of $1,556,747 for town bond debt service payments. So a total of $2,103,151.
So moved.
Second. Okay, hold on.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say that we appreciate in the PCC the full this statement of each of these bonds in terms of its date, its interest rate, and its amount. It's been a long time that we worked on that, and this is now, I think, a number of years it has been running. So we appreciate that very much. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on the debt service. All those in favor?
Ms. Jukusa?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bader?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi. Motion passes. So now we go to about mid-page, the section with other, under other items. So here at mid-page, you can see this section. There are five proposals in this section. OPEV, bond interest on the septic loan program, Open Space Reserve Fund, Capital Reserve Fund, and the Town Contingency Fund. We approved the septic loan bond interest in the discussion on the septic loan interest, or septic loan enterprise fund, and you approved the Capital Reserve Fund for vote last night. We are asking provisionally approve three items. The first, $25,000 in additional funds to the OPEV account. So moved.
Okay, second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jukusa?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bader?
Hi.
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi. Motion passes. Next, we're asking you to provisionally approve $20,000 to be added to the Open Space Reserve Fund. So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jukusa?
Hi.
Abbott? Mr. Bader?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly? Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Ryan?
And last, we're asking you to approve $49,472 to be added to the Town Contingency.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Jukusa?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Bader?
Hi.
Hamilton?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi. Motion passes. Want to have any comments at this point?
I have a kind of overall comment or question about something that we actually approved yesterday. Now would be okay time. All right. I was just thinking more about the IT budget we approved. So back on Monday, we approved a set aside or earmark, whatever we want to call it, a $50,000 for a shop Portsmouth initiative, which I think is a great idea. But part of that initiative, I think, would be maintenance of our website and having, you know, information readily accessible for for people to be able to find Portsmouth businesses and locate them in addition to signs and whatnot. And I know this came up last year, and we did not do it at that time, but under information technology, we have a line item for IT services. Mr. Rayner, my question is, would it be possible to replace the IT services with a full-time IT staff member to support the town, including being the webmaster and development of the website to support the Shop Portsmouth Initiative in addition to everything else that needs to happen within the town?
The short answer to that is yes. Obviously, there's, as I briefed Monday night, the budget increase is 1.56, if I recall, I don't have it ready. 56% over last year, or the tax rate increase is 1.56% year-over-year. I, we worked diligently to get that below the inflation rate. When I initially handed in this budget, the inflation rate at that point was 1.67%. Obviously, the new figures have been released. Year ending March, the inflation rate is now 2.6, I believe. Now, so that said, you know, my marching orders are always tried to try to keep the budget increase within a percent as close to inflation or lower than, than possible. So we did achieve that, and, and we came in below the cap, lower than we've been in quite some time. So I, I'm trying to answer your question, so if you'd bear with me, because I'm thinking through it.
Oh, sure.
So a full-time employee, a full-time employee, just rule of thumb, is about $100,000 investment. Just rule of thumb. I mean, if we average it all out, whether it was a $54,000 clerk or a $100,000 department head, it all averages out to about $100,000 for the employee by the time you add his salary and benefits. An IT information systems kind of person, they're highly paid, they have a lot of certifications. So you would have to pay that person a bit more than an entry-level clerk position, only because their skills are highly marketable. But when we looked into this last fall, going into January, we were very worried about the inflation rate and how much we needed to cut from the budget. In all honesty, we did intend to propose a, an IT manager. But in January, we were still in a situation where we needed to cut a significant amount from the proposed budgets, and that was one of the items left on the table. Where we came in better than I had expected, so it could be afforded. That's the short answer, that was long, to your question. The longer answer would be a comparison between the benefit of hiring a long-term, you know, full-time employee or perhaps a consultant. Both would probably be about the same. Well, and obviously not a long-term hire, but we wouldn't have to pay the benefits, and we might be able to get what we need out of that person, but then that person would not be a long-term employee. So there's the drawback. Obviously, when I originally wrote the budget, I supported an IT manager, information systems manager is what I was calling him. The staff knows that. I tried very hard to keep it in the budget, but by the mid-February, I just couldn't see that I could do it and still stay within the inflation rate. So if we were to do it, whether it's a consultant or an employee, the question would then become, if you want to go forward, as how we would fund it. And there's really only two ways. We would either have to, well, we would have to increase the levy to cover it. We would have to cut somewhere else in the budget to cover it, or a combination thereof. If we afford it, bottom line answer is yes, for 600 and, or an excess of $650,000 below the cap. So we, we could afford it. I suspect that we would still come in. I think if we added 100,000 plus to the budget, I think that would bump the tax rate. Right now, at 1.56, it would probably bump it up to about 1.7. I know Matt Hamilton would have a better idea on that, but it would be in the range of about 1.7 year-over-year, still below the current inflation rate. So.
Rayner? If we, if we already have $63,000 in the budget and we need 100 roughly, how would we go 120? Me, for the IT professionals, it's going to be a little bit more expensive.
Yeah.
Professional is worse than having none.
Yeah, and that's, that's a, that's a thought that I didn't, you know, again, as I'm running through this in my mind, if we did have a higher, or hired a consultant, then we wouldn't need the contractor. I'm sure we would need it as an overlap for some training purposes, but there would be a $63,000 savings potentially there.
I don't know, given in the time of COVID, where our entire lives are being converted to the cloud and are based on, you know, online platforms like this, I think it would serve us very well in a whole host of different areas to have a full-time IT manager for, dedicated to the town that can support, you know, various different activities, including our, our website. So I would, so would it replace the IT services line? That line would go away, and it would be an IT manager line for 120,000?
Yeah, so the way we were doing this back in January, the IT budget looked a lot like the department budget. So you would have the employee up there with the salaries and benefits, and down in the operations section, that IT services total, trying to open the page, and you would think I would know the page to do by now. But that IT services line for 63,000, I think it is, that would go away. I'm almost there.
Well, let's, let's not make it go completely away, because they might need some consulting services.
Yeah, we would have to have some overlap, and so the person is fully on board, but obviously, there's potential savings there that I didn't think of right off the top of my head.
So what's, what's the best way to do this? Because I, I mean, obviously, we're not prepared to out, you know, lay out all the changes to this particular page of the budget. But should I make a motion to that effect?
By parliamentary, I mean, that's up to you, but mechanically, the way I would do this is, would direct us to, go make this change to the budget. You provisionally approved everything. But then now you would be directing a change, and it's in the agenda, if it's needed, at the next meeting to provisionally approve the budget. So you would have to go back and provisionally those lines of the budget that change as a result of this addition.
All right. So I would make a motion that we revise the information technology department budget to reflect the hiring of an IT manager.
That may be.
I'll second it and put some discussion in, and it might, it might change the motion here a little bit, just so we can move this along as quickly as possible, because if, if Mr. Rayner and his staff think that we need, and I don't disagree, I mean, our website has been pretty static, and we don't use it the way it should be used. I, I think the easiest thing for us to do would be to take that 63 and 69 that we, we moved 369 from into the capital improvement funds. So rather than moving the entire budget around and having to raise the, the rates that are on it, if we take the 69 out of, and just make it a clean 300,000, that would give $132,000 into that line item, which would give roughly $100,000 to fund an employee and about $32,000 for contractors for help with that IT, rough numbers based on benefits and all that fun stuff.
Is that 369 one-time money, though? Are we going to cause a problem?
No, it's cash.
Oh, the, that's a good point. I'm glad you brought that up. I mean, oh, that discussion last night, that's one of the things that the school was cautioning us against, which you did. If you had low, if you had taken that $369,000 and lowered the levy, then you create a structural deficit next year when the school comes to us and potentially asks for that money again. But by keeping it in the budget, you're not creating a structural deficit. So however, you're out hiring an employee, which we'll have to pay for next year. But it wouldn't be the entire amount of the 469, which was originally pulled out of the, the school budget. So it's all doable.
But there, there's also potentially retirements in the next few years that could backfill that cost.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know off the top of my head, but we do have a number of retirements over the next three years. That we did budget for potentially three in the next year. And of course, when people retire, the new people coming in are at the base rate.
So should I revise my motion?
If you could, to me, Danielle, if you just revised your motion to move $69,000 from the capital improvement contingency fund, I think is the way Andrew set it up, to the IT and then have Ms. Pulio and Mr. Rayner set up the IT department like a normal town function.
Okay. And if we, and if the, the bottom line that we've provisionally approved is, is there, then it, like, the way it's broken down doesn't matter? Is that?
We would have to reapprove. The number's going to go up, right?
Yeah, but we're going to prove that now.
What I was just describing is, we would keep the bottom line number the same and just move money from the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what was just stated, we would move money from the capital contingency fund, which now has raised 69,000. So we take 69,000 out of that, apply that to 63,000 this year, and between those two figures, we should be able to hire an employee and have the contractor on board long enough to do the terminal work.
Right, or have extra money to have contracted services.
Okay.
So I revise my motion that I move, that we move $69,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund into the IT expenditure sheet. And that's it.
Yeah. And then Lisa and Rich know what to do from there.
Exactly.
Lisa, Lisa and Rich. Seconded then.
All right. So before we go, we, we do have someone on the phone?
Yes.
Is that on you?
Hi, my name is Theodore P. Can you hear my audio?
Yes.
Fantastic. Good evening. My name is Theodore P. I'm the 85 Glenbode and the vice-chair of the Portsmouth Economic Development Committee. and the Portsmud Economic Development Committee. I appreciate fully that there may be philosophical questions about the best means to achieve the objective of a modernized digital infrastructure in the town of Portsmouth. Only a full-time member of town staff dedicated to the information technology challenges before will have the prerequisite fiduciary duty to the town of Portsmouth as well as be able to fully participate in departmental level meetings. The ability to reallocate costs from various proposed line items in the current budget is absolutely within the realm of possibility. As Mr. Hamilton raised, looking at the $63,000 line for IT services on Slide 48, we are well more than halfway there. And I echo that it would probably be a $120,000 full loaded position. Because cheap and fast is very dangerous in the world of IT. Never mind the additional efficiencies in terms of town staff time and reduced hardware expenditures that would be made possible by investing in full-time IT support. The need is very real and the demands are only growing. Cyber attacks are widely perceived as soft targets such as municipalities are only on the rise. Discussing a ransomware attack on the town of East Greenwich in late 2019, their town manager stated, "This environment requires an annual commitment to maintain pace with the technologies and those speaking that are still invented." In my opinion, the potential cost from a serious breach far outweighs any competitive investment. I could not agree more. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Thank you for hearing my comments tonight.
Thank you. Have another hand up.
Joe?
Yeah, hello. Can you hear me? This is Joe Forgione of 28 Equinix Ave. And I'm also a member of the Economic Development Council. I think you guys put me in earlier this year. And if you recall, one of the reasons why I wanted to join the Economic Development Committee with Ted and Steve is because I think Portsmouth has a unique opportunity to attract very community-friendly, high-tax-based-paying businesses. And what those businesses will look for, in addition to our great school system, which we should be proud of, they will look to the fact that we are leading in technology. And frankly, as you said, Keith, you know, we're not with our website. And I think, Daniella, thank you for your comments because clearly you get it and you make my comments very brief. But I think a business who's thinking of moving into our community will look at the picture and being good technology and our infrastructure is another item that we use to attract the right kind of tax-paying businesses. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one more.
Good evening. My name is Steve Johnson, 44 Wapping. And I am the new chair of the Portsmouth Economic Development Committee. We have a lot of new folks on the committee. In fact, the majority were not on the committee at the time that you began your budget process. But in our last two meetings, we have invested some time and thought around the advantages of having a full-time IT professional, IT manager for the town of Portsmouth as comparable municipalities have found necessary. It is always hard for me to recommend increasing health unless I'm really comfortable as an individual, as a taxpayer, that this makes sense for the community. But I have come to view as an individual that investing in an IT manager, FTE, is more of an investment than it is a cost because of the efficiencies that such an individual, if we are able to hire the right person, can bring throughout the town staff and make a material difference to the residents, both the people who are living here but also the towns that are coming in, as Joe has mentioned. In short, I, as an individual and on behalf of the Economic Development Committee, support Ms. Abbott's recommendation and request respectfully that you go to approve your motion. Thank you.
That could be me. This is Gary Crosby.
Yeah.
The, speaking from a staff perspective, is the, this, this person that we're talking about going to be responsible for maintaining the server and responding to our questions and problems with connecting with the server? Or is this just going to be simply a webmaster?
Well, we'll have to work on that. We just talked about this, Gary, and we haven't read the job description. I'm going to say all the above right now.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you.
All right. So, okay. Comments? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Ms. Jacobus?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Budmeyer?
Hi.
Dr. Hamilton? Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Mr. Ryan here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. That, Mr. President, that concludes the process as far as we can take it. We will bring this budget back to you for full provisional approval with this latest motion incorporated at the May 10. I think that's our next one.
Thank you, Mr. Rayner.
Mr. Rayner, will we have this, all the corrections and updates on the website by Thursday or Friday?
It was today, Wednesday. Last track, sorry. Friday. I'm going to need tomorrow to work through with Lisa on the IT costs. But it should be up by Friday.
Great, thank you. Motion to adjourn?